Can the folks on Zoom see and hear me? I don't know how the little thing. Like, you guys, you guys hear me? It's because someone on Zoom.
100% sound great.
All right. Well, I'm Michael Uerman. I have been selected or scan has been selected to carry out a couple of processes that we'll get into here on the to go to the first slide. Today is really the kickoff meeting. And what is actually critically important. And I'm so excited that the school board, the P O C C and the council was here tonight is that when I kicked off this process and we started working at sites around town, it became very clear to me that it was really going to be important for there to be some consensus among the three organizations about the process of moving housing forward, especially because let's face it, housing hasn't been for 144 years. Oh, yes. 144 years, housing wasn't a core service of city or county government. And now we are creating a housing, housing. Hey, Gary. So a couple of desired outcomes. One, I have baked in the whole last hour to actually open it up and have a community conversation. I am a process guy. I would not come into your community and tell you what you should be doing or how you should be doing it. I am really here to build in the ability to get from A to Z, which is Z is building housing for our community here in Lethville. And so I wanted to maybe, maybe I can already get the first outcome out of the way. Is there anybody in the audience who doesn't think housing is a major issue? And like, great consensus. Look at that. But really, the other big piece of today is, is actually not talking about house. It's actually talking about three organizations and your core services. Because one thing I learned in the site analysis, and we'll get into that as part of this process. When we looked at the Dula grant, one of the number one thing on the qualified strategies is use of public property. And how can you use public property for housing? Well, when I went through and I started, I was like, oh, my gosh, look at this parcel. Look at this parcel. And I sit down with one user group and they're like, oh, no, something's going there. Something's going there. I was like, okay, wait a minute. There is a about $100 million in facility needs between the three organizations and like the next. Yeah, this is true. We'll get into it. And, and I said, you know, actually, when I was talking with the land advisory committee, I said, it, it really, we really need to create a space for the three organizations to talk about core services and your future facility needs. And so one outcome of tonight is I hope that the three organizations can set aside. And I'm not your plaintiff for that. You gotta need to get somebody that knows commercial development and all that. But the beauty is that once you guys actually sit down and look through what your needs are for the next 20 years and plan on where those facilities can become, there's going to be lots of leftovers around the periphery of those sites that we can plan housing. But the great news is through the housing site analysis, I think we established three great sites that is at least five years of housing. And so we can relieve the pressure valve, I hope, by the end of tonight's meeting. Because we have plenty of places that we can start planning. And I can tell you that through the site analysis process, if I plan anywhere past five years, price of pipe is probably maybe six times more expensive. Now the cost assessment is applied and you know, we might have flooding housing at that point. So that, that is really one of the big key things. So we're having a housing meeting, but there's a whole point of this that we're not talking about housing, we're talking about core services. And then I have a quick story. I'm building a 120, well, 127 units in southeast car out of Lamar or Hunter. In two months, 16 local governments came together, signed M O Us, put up $600,000. We're breaking down in 11 months of 127 pounds. That happened because of regional cooperation. That happened because all the local government signed up, said, this is a priority. Or that is one of my goals is for the three groups to say, let's get to work. Let's get housing. And we have a very aggressive timeline for the Dula grant to hit the timeline on the back, which is hopefully a million dollar ask. So the short term goals are simple and they're kind of the, basically what the Dula grant is funding is to create a foundation. The first house that we built this community is going to be the hardest house to build because you have to put everything in place for that first house. It's the E restrictions, community guidelines, development strategies, how you get the lottery call. But those are the real big administrative pieces that are huge lift or some policy discussions that have to happen amongst the electeds. How do we prioritize who goes into housing? All of those things, which will be happening. I want to look at low hanging fruit. Let's get some early success. Let's, we should be hopefully trying to work on a project this fall. We are few, next time the snow melts, hopefully foundations are coming out of the ground. Again, collaboration is key. And then one of the big things that Dula grant actually does is through the process that we go through over the next six months, well, I'm hoping that through the site analysis, we started to start to look at the codes and what kind of barriers might be in the codes that are, that are there to allow even the private sector to start providing some work for sale. Next slide. So everyone knows. And I was, I geeked out at like six this morning and went into my economics textbook, market failure, looked up the definition. But we all know the symptomatic reasons that local government now is dealing with housing. It's because we are dealing with a market failure at the, at the highest level because of the housing prices. So yeah, you know, lack of supply, high demand of labor, material costs, lower supply of houses. I actually did my little Zulo look up this morning just to see what was on the market today in Lethville. I can't afford to live here. So I always like to, the state loves AMI. And that's how all their programs are regulated. What's really important though is, and we're economic planners, is average wage. And AMI is a bell curve that they measure. And that gets skewed because you have folks in your community who have high needs. And that bell curve really kind of exaggerates the curve. But when you talk about average wage, that doesn't include your retirement communities clutching, collecting pensions. So really you can see there is a little bit of a gap in there for actual average wage. This is today's Zolo average price near community, 522. Like I said, I couldn't, couldn't live here. And that, and that 522 listing that I saw today didn't include the repairs that was in the mix so that he went freezing tonight. Next slide. I love this quote and it comes from why governments run food factories. Abraham Lincoln said it best. But again, I want to focus in on the fact that as local government, and I was a community planner for 15 years, we always get stuck with things that people don't want to handle. And it's just like.
That was a very fine demonstration of the core service. Thank you.
Did I ask them where they live? Just in case we forget that, you know, super style is a very important part of the community. Thank you. All right. Well, I still want to really honor that hour discussion. So we're, Chrisy, I'll, I'm gonna talk a whole semester. But and then we'll try to be done by like seven, 10 with this. It shouldn't go that much longer. So yeah, so getting back to this. Again, you know, it's like the fire department, you know, local government picks up the things that, that the private industry doesn't actually the textbook side, textbook that I pulled this from, it's private, private industry will do things that they have profits. Nonprofits like us will do things that help out private or local government and things that are still profitable. And local government is running food plants. So that is perfect. You know, I wanted to touch on this, and this is a horrible thing to say, and this is a lifelong lesson I learned doing affordable housing. This local government's actually suck at building houses. And if you ask, and I hate to say it like that, but it's true. And the reason for that is you guys are trying to build a housing bike. And if you ever talked to a contractor and you said, would you build a house by committee, like calling the drywallers? What do you think about this? What do you think about that? It's not, it doesn't happen, right? But again, we have you guys as policymakers, there is reasons that you have to go through these decision processes and have very inclusive processes. But I want to keep that in mind because as we talk about barriers to development, partnering with the private sector and having them brought in, and as we talk about incentives, that is truly a really important piece to not just developing publicly owned land, but bringing that in. All right, next slide. So I'm going to turn this real quick to Tim and Paul, just to kind of talk about focusing back in off the housing thing on what you guys do on a daily basis. Yes, I have. Yeah. So there's a, you know, list of things that you typically think of when you think of local government or services that the county and the city provide. You know, just three, you know, quick things that all of us have dealt with, right? Like health services and human services and like with public health, right? We're going through a pandemic. We rely heavily on public health to help protect our community and give us guidance on that. You know, another example was our first responders who just came and other essential workers, right? If they can't afford to live here, then we can't provide those services. And then just like seeing the challenges that we deal with, with retention, whether it's law enforcement, fire services, EMS, all of that. And then also impacting, you know, the county budget on trying to increase people's wages to match things. But then, you know, those increases take away from other services. And there's always, you know, squeezing the balloon. There's always different, different ways you can play with the budget, but it always has an impact or a trade off. And then one example for anyone who was in the courthouse today. We paid for refurbishment of both boilers over the past two years. And this morning, the courthouse didn't have the boiler showing, they both went out. And so it was very cold in the building. So I think all of you realize, you know, the courthouse is an aging facility. We've closed the jail. We have a statutory requirement as a county to have a jail. That's why we're working to build a community justice center. And then looking around at other, you know, community facilities that we have, whether it's the ice rink, you know, that requires maintenance and upkeep. Same with whether it's the dog park or the tubing hill or any of those things or the pool. You know, all of those things cost money as well. And then, you know, we want to be able to provide all of these services, but we can't, I can't, county can't provide any of those services if nobody can live here. So that's why housing is now, you know, it is a very loud and obvious priority for the county. But we have to think about it in these terms as well, of the things that we do provide for everybody.
Not me.
No, it, it's a huge problem. And we have some positions to fill in the city, but not that many. The county has far more than school district has even more than either of us. And we've heard the Clive Act has about 60 buildings that they can't fill because people can't come here and live. This is a huge problem.
It's just a mission of Lake County School District. Lake County School District challenges students to reach their fullest potential through personal engaged and rigorous learning in the classroom and beyond. Going to the next slide. On the right there, the school district conducted a master finding, a dramatic finding process dated February 15th of 2019. So pretty recent. But top item identified was the new pre-K for two classroom spaces that the students did occupy this past August. The list here is the six remaining items. There were seven total items listed. I believe this is the order of the community prioritized. There was staff and like a district prioritization. And then the community also asked the same questions of those seven items. How do you rank in order the remaining facility needs in the school district? Really that middle school addition, that either an addition or new classroom space for grades three to six was the number two item. Both in the school district as well as, as you said, staff as well as community. The remaining items were same items, just in different order. But for those top two were the two top priorities. And they were ranked as very high priority, immediate need priorities. As that's part of responding to.
I think you hit on a lot of these. But yeah. Yeah, just the last things. We are right now working on it. It's about a six month project, but just like a facility, a county facility review. And then deferred maintenance, looking at deferred maintenance and future maintenance costs. And it just probably isn't a surprise to any of you, but that's tens of millions of dollars in years of deferred maintenance. Then also before we're thinking of needing new facilities and then how do we maintain them? So the reason I wanted to bring this up and with, with the core group in here is right now, this group, the council, the school district, the folks in this room really have the ability to shape the community over the next 20 years. Because all of these massive public investments are really what, I mean, these are, I mean, you talk about libraries, you talk about new schools. I mean, there are community projects. The one thing that I can't do to help this community is create more layer, right? And that is when I looked at the map and I looked at where could I put housing? I, it became very clear to me when I look at this list, let's plan, let's make the space to plan this list over the next couple of years, working together collaboratively so that we can free up and see where there is additional space for housing. But again, having to find new land for school or justice center is an extremely big expense to add on to a worry. Next slide. So great, you brought it up. So I don't even have to really hit on this slide. But I mean, I actually just went on your guys' websites and looked at your job postings and clearly housing is starting to affect staffing. I'm not sure the county or the, the school district is winning. And I'm not sure that's a win. That's not sure something you want to win. But anyhow, I mean, it's, it's clearly starting to affect your ability to provide this core services. So immediate action again, let's focus it on the low hanging fruit. How can we, how can we get Jackie to be successful with some housing built, right? It's key. The great news is, and I'll bring up Chrissy, we're not starting from scratch. So there's nothing more exciting for me is coming into a community where I don't have to come in and for a room and say, housing is a big deal. You guys got to do this. Actually, we've had advocacy from the housing coalition. And I wanted Chrissy to go through these accomplishments because it's been, it's actually quite impressive list and all the awesome stuff.
Thanks, Michael. So most of you guys know that the Housing Coalition was formed in 2016 and they've been working pretty aggressively this whole time. You might not know that the Housing Coalition donates about 35 to 45 hours of volunteer time every single month. Back when we did two A, that went up to 90 hours per month. And I would like to highlight that that coalition is your community experts, right? We live in this community. We experience the housing instability. We talk to the people who are experiencing it. We have board members who are housing insecure. We have board members who are building housing, selling housing, all of that stuff, leading these recommendations. So please recognize the value that this board brings to you. Some of the things we help with are advocacy, technical assistance and capacity. And we do have a formal board that makes decisions. So when the coalition comes together and says, hey, you'd like to work on this. And then a subcommittee makes the recommendation to the Housing Coalition Board, they vote on it before it comes to you guys. So everything is very well voted before it comes, before elected officials. The next group I facilitate is the policy advisory team. And this group works on recommendations to building and land use code. And this is another diverse group. We have three community members who are housing insecure. And we have four community members who are housing industry experts. Typically, those people would not sit in the same room together, let alone come to consensus on policy recommendations. This group has been highlighted in a, in a statewide documentary. We've also got state accolades for being able to do this. It's very hard. It's very challenging. Anne and Amy are both on that group. And we, we've really had to beat some things down like over three meetings to be able to come to consensus. So super proud of that group as well. And then I just wanted to talk about the funding and the impact of the Housing Coalition, just giving you some highlights from the last few years. So we're currently funded by a grant called Community Organizing for Prevention. So housing ties directly to a lot of health issues, including substance abuse. If you are stressed and don't have enough money to take care of your family because you are paying too much for your house or you are having a couch surf, you're more likely to utilize substance abuse. So we, that grant gives us $200,000 for community organizing advocacy work. We're in the first year of that grant. It ends June 30th, and we have two more years of that grant. So lots of work still to do for housing for the coalition. And in 2019, we went to the Housing Authority and said, man, you guys have been doing great stuff with the Mount Massive Banner. And we'd like for you to do more. And they said, let's do it. And we helped get some new board members. That board hadn't been fully seated for 15, 20 years. Now it's fully seated with some great expertise on there. We made cut recommendations in 2020, 2021? I'm not sure. Both to the county and city. And the city is moving forward with one of our recommendations. And one of these recommendations is going to be one of the qualifying strategies that will enable us to get this money that Michael was talking about, the incentive grant funds. And we made the recommendation back in July 2021 for the county and city to hire a housing director. When we facilitated that conversation, you guys decided that the city, the county and the housing authority would collaboratively work together to hire that person, fund of that position. And then that position is going to transition to the executive director of the housing authority. And it's really great to see that collaboration from all three parties. And then we did funding mechanism recommendations in 2021 as well, both to the county and city. And the city said, yeah, let's move forward with the accommodations tax. And then the Housing Coalition led the community education on that. We went knocked on doors. We did lots of events where we talked to people and that passed by 70% voter approval. So we established the very first funding mechanism for housing. We helped the city get something called a ship grant, which added technical capacity to get the first affordable housing development moving forward. They have an R F Q out right now so they can hopefully find a developer. And they will likely be the first developed of affordable housing in our community. And we established a relationship with CHAPA, Colorado Housing Finance Authority. They like us so much that they reached out to us and said, we'd really like for you guys to pilot this tool library thing where your community members have access to physical tools to do repairs on their homes. So then we were reached out to all of our partner organizations. And the Lake County Library decided to apply for that grant and was awarded it. And please encourage your friends, your neighbors to utilize that resource. We're super happy to have it in our community. And then we helped the Chappy Housing Trust create financial literacy classes, which is essential for our community. We can build all the housing in the world. And if we do not prepare our community members to purchase said housing, we will fail. So certainly we'll ask of you to please help share the word every time that we are offering those classes and encourage people to sign up. And then I'm going to place through this. I was going to hit on the highlights, but I'm not going to do that. There's lots of reports that we have helped facilitate, including the 2018 housing needs assessment, the 2019 Merck student, Merck studies. Those were some students that came up. They did three different studies. The 2019 Housing Action Plan and the 2020 Barriers to Home Ownership and Renting. This is probably the most important of the reports for you guys to be really well aware of. It's the Housing Action Plan. It step by step tells us exactly what we should do as a community. Right now I'm working with the consultants who drafted that policy or that, sorry, report to do a follow up and see where we, how we are doing on that. So they're going to be doing some interviews with, with you folks. They're going to be asking about who's implementing these policies? What barriers are there? And what enabled it to happen if we have completed it? And then there'll be three different categories, completed, in progress and started. It will look much prettier than this. This was my like last minute draft, but as you can see, we've implemented four and we're in progress on three. The next thing that is really important and the Housing Coalition started working on it. And then it was really funny, Michael was like, I think this is something you guys should do. And I was like, great, we're already doing it. Was that we are creating a diverse community communication plan. And so it is the coalition's job to bring the equity lens to this work. It is Michael's job to tell you to bring the economic development aspect to it. Our job is to continue to say, there are more people that live in this community than the people who work for you, right? And we want to serve our entire community without being, without leaving anyone. So we, you may have noticed, last week we had a article in the Herald Democrat. That's going to be a monthly recurring article. Since they only publish in English, we have three other strategies that we are implementing in Spanish. We're going to be doing flyers, some peer to peer texting so we can push information right to people's phones and some Spanish radio ads because we know 75% of our community works in evil and stomach counties. And the vast majority of our Latinx community members work out of the county. And the purpose of all of this is to push people to the website and our email list and our text list so that we can let people know when the housing is coming, how they can qualify for it, when the financial literacy classes are, all the information. And also on our website that we're going to create, it will have, it'll be like the one stop shop for all information housing. Calendar and all that stuff.
Thank you. All right. So the goal planning grant. Like I said, I'm not starting from scratch, which is huge. And those planning documents, I can tell you, having worked in our community, so I'm on step one of a lot of those actions. And it's needs assessments are very boring for more than that. So great, I'm so glad I'm helping with that. So again, process. We have a Dula Housing Incentive Grant. And the very bottom here is really the, the due date. What's really cool about this, and I've been preaching for years to Dula, is take care of broccoli costs. We don't need gap, I, well, impressed you and I did it. I don't need gap finding anything. I need to be able to get sites ready for vertical construction. I can always pass vertical construction on for a sale product. And I real creative. Dula finally came up with a broccoli cost solver grant program. And that grant is due in this, in the, in the fall. But I'm guessing it's November for us, November, the grant site comes out. This mission critical is to qualify for this grant. There's the first page on there is a list, a giant list in black letters. Sorry, it's under the staff report of qualified strategies. What Dula is looking for is for the community to actually qualify as many of those strategies as you can. And I'll be honest with you, I just learned the hard way on a grant application. They're actually, your grant award is going to be based on the number of how many you can actually adopt for those strategies. They're saying you have a minimum of three, but communities that were successful in the catalog now have to plan. So we are going to really look at that, that list of regions, processes and try to do that. There's actually two parallel processes. There's actually two parallel processes that are gonna be happening, March, April, May, June. One is a site analysis, and I'll get into that, and that's probably the most controversial part of this whole meeting, and we'll hash that out as a group on, as a map attached to it. Um, but that process is really intended for us to look at three different low-hanging fruit sites and determine what barriers, i.e. zoning, density, et cetera, might be keeping those, those sites from being developed. Secondarily, what are the infrastructure, what are the bracket classes, I always call it? So does it need a sewer line? Does it need drainage fix? How is it gonna be raised so that when we advertise it as an RFQ, it's ready for vertical construction? What are those costs? And by the way, the grant potentially pays for that. Um, and so having that number and knowing what we're asking for is a huge piece of that planning, planning. And then lastly, um, the goal is to really get the community excited about the concepts. And then how those concepts and good planning, and I'll talk about one second particular, how those are reflected in our current joint process. On the bottom of that, you'll see that, and once this spits out, that the architects, uh, and engineering firm that that will be selected on the twenty-third, and thank you to the interview committee for doing such a big job. We had four amazing applicants for that, so I think any decision on any of those teams is gonna result in an awesome product for your community. Um, one of their key tasks at the end of not only providing concept plans, very concept plans, but there are big pieces, cost estimates, and also kind of a zoning analysis of, well, we could probably fit an extra three or four units on here if we adjust this density or this set that, or if we allow townhomes or apartments in some of these, not saying with land use again is a huge thing, you don't change it for one project, right? But starting to look at what those potential barriers are. Um, with that, the second major parallel process that's going on while this is going on, or while the science analysis is building the foundation for the, for the administration of the housing. And that includes community guidelines, which again, not starting from scratch. Housing Coalition has gone through a ton of that, and we're ready to rock and roll. Uh, there are some political policy discussions that I will be coming back in front of the council and the county to talk about who qualifies, and that's probably, it'll give that, probably this controversial thing. But that is really the document that, that we use, uh, will probably do that, because you, the qualify applicants, do fair process, ensure equal access to the housing resources that are all around. The final thing here, there's two other really kind of other ones here. This is me geeking out with the attorneys. There's a your codes have some really fun title searches ahead of me. Um, imagine that, my town title messed up. So we did bake in some money to actually pull some title and get some of those property disposition and some legal fees associated with that. That's above my pay grade, uh, but we did bake that in to make sure we can use the public property once we, once we get it there. Um, and then the final is special districts. You guys are very unique in that your water sewers are controlled by multiple special districts. What's really cool was, and what we're actually really should be doing, and this is, this is actually, this is actually a harder page document, but this is this is all just the regional infrastructure projects, and we've heard about a trillion dollars committed to the federal government, while your local officials participated in about a year-long process to identify, like, counties in your infrastructure projects, a lot of them are water wastewater. With the money coming out of the feds, Stan is actually the conduit to help those special districts apply for federal funding. And so as we talk about those conversations, one of the big things that when you write a grant for wastewater planning is, who is your, who do you service? What's the AMI or what's the population? So there is a nexus to that money in the future and incentivizing affordable development. And so we'll be conducting those meetings with the special district, and then hopefully being a resource to help them get some much needed infrastructure funding. All right, next slide, I'm gonna kind of get into, um, the depths of this, it'll be quick. Again, community guidelines. Who qualifies rental property, rental policies, water process, resale price appreciation is a big one. You gotta follow fair housing law, because government, big, big blinking lights on that. Uh, and then, actually, I can tell you that nobody will ever fit, and I, this is the hardest lesson I ever learned in doing water, everyone's situation is a little unique, and so having a proper place for them to go do an appeal and make sure that they don't get out of the process because they didn't check one of the boxes. Next slide. Um, development strategy is a huge piece of this. How do we move forward with vertical construction? Is a, this is probably the meat of the conversation that we'll be having about a regional housing authority. How do we, how do we do it? Is a, is it a public-private partnership? Are we trying to, oh, property? Again, I don't have an answer. I'd walk through the examples. Actually, this one was, this was the house that I moved into in Crestview. Guess who built this? I guess it's school district, the, the school, the high school kids. Yep, they actually designed and then built, and they actually did, they're on their third house now. Uh, super cool program, but those are the kind of things that, as you develop programs, that you can do. Um, three, three up there on the first, first list, community interest. There's lots of models out there. There's probably a hundred ways to build housing. It's really what fits for the community, what fits your structure, what assets can bring. Next slide. All right, so here's the biggie. Um, so again, when we sat down, we had a land advisory committee that sat down to look at publicly owned parcels. And we tried to, and there's a lot, there's a lot of publicly owned parcels that are not identified on that map. And, and I can tell you the why, the reason that the ones are on the map is I have a conversation with someone saying, oh no, that's gonna be a future X or a future Y. And I was like, oh, okay, what about, no, 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 the school district wants potentially move the school over onto that parcel. So we, by process of elimination, really weighted down to three sites. And I would call it those small, medium, and large sites. And what's really cool about the way this site and house is structured is its planning. I wanna be real clear with everybody in the room, because one of the things I'm hoping to get consensus is a thumbs up of, hey, let's, let's talk about planning on these three sites. What that doesn't mean are we're gonna go out tomorrow and start building up. It would require your boards to talk about it, come through consensus. And there's actually three or two community charrettes to even talk about those sites. Uh, and I, and I wanna talk to usual, so I wanna be crystal clear that if we start doing planning on it, it doesn't commit your organization to selling the property or disposing of the property anymore. I wanna be crystal clear. So the first site, um, and you can't see it because I did a horrible job on the press point. Um, I'm gonna start with this stall. And through the proper search of, uh, of looking, we actually identified two or three kind of infill scatter sites. Two are county-owned, and one is a kind of a scattered site. So if you, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a site up on Eighth Street, a site on Fourth Street that is a half block. The county owns both of those parcels. There are some infrastructure needs. There are some drainage potential issues. That's the whole point of this design threat, is to have engineers come in and look, and also look at how kind of density you could potentially go on those sites, et cetera. The school district has some, some sites, um, down by the ball fields. Again, what we wanna look at is, are those sites ready for vertical construction? Could they accommodate housing? Are there any school district needs beyond, beyond housing that could potentially go on those sites? To me, that was, this is the awesome, Jackie, we can do housing starting in the, you know, starting with an RFQ in the fall. It's really huge, because like I said, getting some of that, I'm like, an object in motion stays in motion, right? So really having commitment to looking at the infill sites, and, and there's a magic economy of scale number, which is thirty units. If we're able to find three infill sites that could accommodate up to thirty units, it really does attract a voter, and it really starts to drive down costs on labor, supplies, electronics, et cetera. So that's site one. Site two is actually a really cool site, which is, um, which is a combined private-public partnership, which is down on Highway, uh, twenty-four coming in town. Uh, the owner, Melon Zona owns it, Fritz, what's his last name? Fritz Howard. Um, he actually came with, came to the county and started talking about, he had a large amount of his staff that is housing insecure, and wanted to be a pro active business owner, and I talked about a property. What's actually really cool is if you look at that site, he owns about two and a half acres. There's about two point two acres of public land in the form of right-of-way, and also this, again, title work needs to be happened. Serious parcel, it doesn't show on this, that's our side of the, by your first day. Um, so if that parcel's added, it's, it's basically a five-acre parcel that has public property. What I explained to, to Fritz is, you know, if you come towards the, into this process, we can, we can, it's a conceptual design process. And we can talk with the city council about right-of-way locations, PUDs, creative ideas to make that parcel not just, you know, an alley and, and future housing. He also has some really awesome ideas of pushing the envelope, of sustainability, all that stuff. But that is a great example of learning through public-private partnership and planning. And it's also going, I have a feeling that his ideas are really cool, and then his stress, maybe, you know, just a tease there. As a planner, that's why I'm, that's why I'm white here, is because of those kind of ideas, uh, but it's good stuff. Then the final one is the climax parcel. And the importance around this parcel is twofold. There's a big portion around the intermediate school that the school district controls, and there's also the actual climate parcel. The, what's currently happening, maybe you can, if I mispeak things right now. Like, uh, climax is actually going through environmental processes for the cleanup. What's really critical about that process is identifying right, future right-of-ways and utility extension. So the planning around that parcel is really critical, because that's probably your five-year hopeful, you know, before you start going vertical, because there's a ton of infrastructure that is potentially clean up, which I hope is actually pretty light. But the reason we're asking to potentially look at the school district parcel is actually the Dua grant, believe it or not, allows for early childhood as part of one of the, as one of the potential uses of grant funding. So not only is that site potentially gonna be an awesome site that, that, uh, climax is on the table, because as we heard, they have housing needs, but as well as potentially looking at future needs around how do we plan early childhood. The only other thing I'll say about that site is infrastructure cost, it's all about mobilization. The price of a, the price of extending a pipe past the purple and the green, the price of, the price of the pipe is expensive. It's getting the track over the labor and everything on site. So by having a holistic view of that site, we can truly understand what the true cost of bringing utilities to that full site. That, this is probably coming to consensus on this tonight, is probably the hardest decision. And I don't need to put everybody on the spot, and you certainly don't have to, we, we can always pull aside back, um, off of here. And again, I wanna stress that this doesn't mean we're building, building houses tomorrow. Um, last slide, you know, okay. So again, once we go through this process, this is what's really important to do, is that we start thinking outside the box. We're incentivizing private development for how to, how to leverage and build workforce housing. There should always be a quick pro quo for lack of a better way. You know, if, if someone's coming in and building seven hundred thousand dollar homes, probably not gonna get on the desk of this, right? But when you have a private developer who comes in, you're a community, willing to take on the workforce housing problem, and to proactively work with the local governments and potentially the school district and lands, it's time to start thinking outside the box. And then the problem has gotten to the point where it's gonna take creative solutions to get there. Also, we're talking about, uh, coordination with our special districts, uh, and really taking a hard, playing this code. So with that, I'm gonna stop talking. Um, again, big picture, I wanna open it up for discussion. Um, again, we're not gonna plan facilities tonight. We're not gonna plan a housing site tonight. What I hope we can come to consensus on is a commitment to moving this process forward, and a blessing to move this in a public, you know, if all this is public process. So I don't, certainly don't wanna talk about school district property if the board says, no, 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 no. And you can spank me tonight. This is why I'm here. I'm the, I'm the whipping boy. But if this is okay with moving forward with these different sites, that allows us to continue this process into the, into the, the fall grants. So I'll answer any questions, and then I'm gonna open up to the leadership in the room to kind of control the dialogue. Any quick questions for me?
I, I have a question. You know, in, in all the conversations we've been having about housing for years now, we've heard from both, uh, non-profit and for-profit developers. Is there, do you have any preference about that? Is there, is, are there any downsides?
You, you need, you need to look at every tool in the toolbox. So you should be looking at private public partnerships. You should be looking at leveraging public funds. The, the, the answer, Greg, is this is gonna cause a lot of stress on budget, right? And your budget and your policies are gonna go tandem. You cannot build your way out of it. Actually, I was on a Dua presentation, and the presentation before me was Senate County. They need twelve hundred units. It's four hundred and eighty million dollars in housing needs over the next ten years. They're not building themselves out of it, right there.
Uh, we're certainly trying.
Oh, you are. I give, I give more, more, I want credit for it. That's a huge number. I mean, it is picked up and it's done. It's done. My point, Greg, to that is, is you have to look at every potential way that you can, you can go. And some, and again, some will emerge as really great opportunities, and some, I, you know, I can't tell you how many times I went down a path and didn't make it. Any other questions for me? You guys are, you got me off the hook. Come on.
I use Fritz as an example of, of private landowner who's kind of came forward with that. Uh, is there any way to solicit other landowners who might be minded towards that and?
Yeah, so.
Other folks wanna do that?
So that, that is the purpose of this process. So it's actually a housing incentive grant. And so the whole purpose of those qualified strategies is how do you incentivize the private sector through your policies at local, at the local government. And so that is exactly the outcome that they're looking for. The reason that that parcel in particular was, we had a willing property owner. It actually, if we were to go after grant funding for that parcel, there's enough public land and immediately intermixed with that parcel, so it truly is, like, I can make the case in a grant application, it is a true public-private partnership, right? Um, but I think it serves, my hope is that that discussion is gonna serve as a model of how you engage other property owners.
And the second question is, uh, you know, I'm sure it's not just that number of boxes ticked, but on this list of qualifying strategies, if both the city and the county have done things, does that increase?
It does.
The amount, and, and I'm sure there's value to us, uh, being consistent anyway, but it seems like that would be another value.
It, it, you know, I learned it the hard way. I, I represented that project they talked about with the sixteen local governments. Um, a lot of them don't have land use codes, and the feedback I got was like, well, you should have had more strategies. And I was like, well, I, I can't, I can't zone in multifamily when there's no zoning. I was like, you know, but, but yes, they, you are gonna be, that is, number one, that's gonna be an extremely competitive grant. I can promise you that, because I already know from the catalytic ground, the forty million that they had appropriated, they had forty million dollars in proposals in the catalytic ground. So they are going to be really looking at projects that can break ground, that can, that really use those funds and communities that have done, gone through this planning process on the backend with all my shit.
Does anybody online have questions for Michael?
They make it through the spreadsheet by our.
Yeah, I checked on it when we came back. Didn't look like right now.
So do I sound, my silence is bad. Am I a crazy guy now? I mean, I guess my question to the, to the, the leadership in the room is, I mean, does this sound like an okay path? Are we in agreement that, the other thing to do is, there's a huge time commitment to process in here, right? It's not just, it's not just, I mean, there's planning commissioners in, in the room, like code amendments required, public process, et cetera. So I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement. If there's, actually, if there's ideas on how to change the process or something, I might have left out. This is the, this is the time, because we are gonna, we're gonna shoot out a cannon, I'm like, Mr. ADHD guy. So we're gonna hit the red dot, run it in March.
Are there any parcels outside of these that you're looking at?
So, sorry, any what parcels? Um, they, we, we look at publicly owned property. So we did not look at any. So we did not look at any parcels that were under private. Right, the Fritz parcel was unique in that when we, actually the whole reason his parcel came up was there's two parcels that sandwich it. And we were like, oh, who owns the property right next to those two lots? And then we approached, approached Fritz and he was like, yeah, I have a huge housing problem right now. So that's why that parcel kind of got, but there was quite a few conversations with that property owner before that. The matter of the year.
This is all kind of Johnson City, there's nothing, you know, north of the city or west of the city or south of the city.
We, we took a pretty hard look. I don't think there was.
I think the, the key and I, you know, I, I mean, I asked that to my homeowner time, he kept bringing me back to, looking at the thirty to forty unit. So at least that's where I could go back to for, how to best leverage the grant process and grant funding. Um, so sure. Yeah, I think that, that's what kind of hits those criteria.
And the other two pieces of that, just why, why look at the city? All the, when you actually apply for the housing grant, they're going to say, the people that move into the housing, are they close to transit? Are they close to, so, you know, how far can they walk to the grocery store? Can they walk to services? Um, and also can you, you, you can increase, the reason we're looking, you can increase density by tapping to central sewer and water. Great question. Yes.
So, um, school or both, school district both has needs and property. But we cannot really influence code.
Yep.
Um, what are you, as a collective, hoping that the board, the school board can bring?
That's a great question. So, so the biggest thing that I would ask the school board is a commitment to facility planning. Because this map does not in any way, like I said, we tried to remove parcels that could potentially, that were in Paul's list of the facilities that were going through, that had, you know, spacings that would potentially fit on the name of the sites. So, you know, I hate to throw it out there, but the bus line site, for instance, is not, is not on, right?
Yep.
You know, obviously that site has kind of gotten to the point where it's, it's on the new facility list and need. Again, we stayed away from any of those kind of parcels. Because we want the county, the city and the school board to commit to a facility planning process. And you guys have time, because the great news is those parcels on that map represent five years of planning. So there's no, I want to create, my goal of doing it this way is to create the space for the school board, the county and the council to have a really meaningful discussion because that is so much money in facilities. I thought that myself, whoa. Um, I mean, you have to, I mean, and, and the other big piece is, as we know, all those kinds of facilities require funding. And there needs to be, as you keep discussion about how you bring those into your constituents. If you have new property tax increases for those, I suppose. And so I'm not your guide to, to guide that discussion. But I hope by relieving the stress on these sites, you guys can come together as a group and make. And there is like, for instance, you know, Dola does a pretty easy twenty-five thousand dollar planning grant. So there are grant funds that you guys can talk to as a board to come in and hire a facility. Again, I, just that, you know, when you're talking about fire stations, ladder, justice centers, I couldn't even begin to give you pricing or split foot it. So you really do need, really need a professional to have that meaningful discussion. And it's a huge discussion, so it's going to be a very public discussion if you're talking about undeveloped access, so.
As far as the land that Climax is, well, might have acquired, however happens that the city ends up with land. I really would like to see the city follow through on committing that land to housing specifically. I'm not sure if there was anything other planned before I joined, but I really would like to see us commit on that being designated for housing specifically.
I, I would tell you that is the basis on which Climax will, will, will get the land to us. And part of the conversation is then what they could get out of it, you know, are some deed restricted homes.
Yep.
At least primary deed restriction tier, uh, so that they start solving some of their housing problems. And, and, and we have nine acres upon which to build housing. So yes, there, there is, there has never, never been any equivocation about that, so.
I have a question about the timeline. I've heard from other communities that they're trying to have their grants submitted and think that the little process will be first of September. Are you concerned about?
If it's first of September, we're going to hit.
Okay, so he, so the.
So that is, that just makes my job go like this, whoop. But there, uh, what I have actually heard from the feedback, so I applied for a catalytic grant. And we were told that the opportunity was, the grant cycle was most likely to open up October first. They're going to do a month long submit. But again, if you're hearing September first, that's news to me. So they might open in September first, it might be October first, um.
I was just wondering about the November, because it looks like it's, I'm here it has.
That's, yeah.
Middle of November.
Yeah, we will adjust to answer your question. Because it's that, that's a, that's a pretty awesome opportunity.
I would just hate to go through the whole process and not make that.
Yeah, one of the really cool things that our organization just did was we actually brought on a grant writer. So SCAD has really broadband housing, planning and grant writing for communities. And we are, we're funded by county dues. Our grant writer, we stole from Sioux Falls and actually she, I think it was in thirteen ninety Sioux Falls. She's been running grants for thirty years, so. And I've actually been coordinating with her on two Dole, Dole Grants, two Goka Grants all day in between meetings that are due this, due tomorrow. So I, I mean, the great thing about it is we are, as an organization, we have capacity at that deadline shift.
I'm going to kind of ask leading questions, so this kind of whole year.
Yeah.
So we need property, everybody recognizes that, and you know, we've got some really nice parcels that are identified. Um, but a big part of this, and on your timeline, you've got it's in kind of the little orange section. Where it talks about the adoption of those that the city is counting. And I think that's part of this conversation that just needs to be so clearly stated. And elected and appointed officials are really the ones that I'm sort of talking to in this point. Uh, so my first question is, as you've done this analysis, I, I assume that you kind of looked at qualifying strategies that Dole has put out. And then what community actually has in place? What do you guess that number is?
As far as what's currently on there?
What's currently on the books for the city or the county?
That's a great, I actually had a qualifying strategy.
I think there was probably four. And you know that in catalyst rounds, Dole was expecting a handful of associations when they first put in. They had, what was it, twenty-five or thirty, I mean, the number was unbelievable.
I had the.
Incredibly, incredibly competitive. And like you said earlier, of those, those communities that were going for this money. Remember, this money, we're welcome money, we're going for a hundred thousand here, million bucks potential. They had ten, we have three. There is a five month period on this schedule where the public, the elected, the appointed elected officials are going to hopefully have some code updates that are going to come before them. And of this list, just kind of looking at it quickly, there are sixteen things there. Ten or twelve of those are actually land use and development type things that will be changed in codes. If those things don't happen, this is all the point. People are not competitive, you will not get the money. So I just want to sort of express upon the elected officials, but without these code changes, none of this happens. This work started in two thousand and sixteen, we're here in twenty twenty, we still don't have those things on the books. Dole is trying to tell communities like ours, get it together, we'll give you the money if you get it together. This is how development gets done. And so I'll get out my soapbox and mics, thanks for kind of following along with that.
No, well, I can tell you first hand, I got burned for not having that.
Yeah.
Dan, I would say.
This is your, your guide.
City code changes are about two months out. As part of that, we've talked about changing R one to R two. Which would be another, a separate qualifying event, uh, so on. I look at this, I think, I think we're capable, I don't know if we can get to ten, but we get there first.
Great, that's great news and I really appreciate city continues to work on that.
And one other thing that Greg and I actually had talked about even is, one lesson I learned is the way you codify and that, that resolution or ordinance as you do it, kind of thing like the county and city. We are here to assist and make sure that you're actually in the qualification. So, um, you know, there's going to be a conversation with Christiana and with Floyd about making sure that we're, we're doing that as part of this.
It sounds like we've got a lot of sort of horsepower behind to help lead that process. But it, it's got to, you know, it's got to start there and it's got to get all the way through implementation and adoption. Without that, this money doesn't flow.
Additionally, I will say that Dola has hired a consultant that we luckily know. She lives in this community to, and, and to analyze how effective said policies are. So you can't just throw some, something and hope it sticks.
Yeah.
They're going to know if it is an effective policy that will make an impact in our community.
Right, and there's so many good examples of it. I mean, as a planner, the best way to get into something is to find somebody else who's already done it, plagiarize it. And if limited in your own community, yeah, Michael can also help with those kinds of.
I plagiarize all, plagiarize codes.
Yeah, they've got all, all those resources there for it.
All the time. And then Dan, another, another big piece is, you know, this site analysis piece, like, I, I was really excited because Fritz actually, while he was, he's kind of a liar and he's like, I got some crazy ideas, but well, I don't know. And I was like, that's, that is what I wanted to hear.
That is.
Because, because he wants to push the envelope on, you know, that's it. And it's like, if you open up your latest APA magazine, nothing you said, but wasn't in like the last twelve months of planning, like, like, best practice. But it's again, there's a code reflector to practice.
That's, that's, that's where the rubber meets the road.
All right, I'm going to ask.
I had a question.
Sure.
I got a couple, I got a question. So at some point in your remarks, you said, it's going to stress budgets. Um, that stresses me out. So I mean, maybe you could talk more about that, because I mean, from my perspective, we're, well, as you said, and we have lots of other competing demands on extremely large, you know, preferred maintenance things, so. But I mean, just specifically, if you could talk through sort of where you see, like, like, like what those big budget numbers are? Any of our organization would be sort of asked to contribute. So I mean, we're bringing the asset of land to the table, you know, and some amount of kind of organization and staffing. And matching, so what else, what else is on top that we need to be thinking about as big, having big, big budget implications?
So that's a great question. Um, and that is the lifelong lesson I learned. And Dan, you could probably jump in because some of it has a war chest. Chris and Butte had a war chest and that war chest is flooded through lots of different taxes, et cetera. Well, I, what I'll tell you Jeff is that we instituted a very small fee and it's just exactly like the, the, the tax that was passed on this year's ballot. Just that small amount enabled me to go from building three to four units a year when I first started to building ten to twelve. And it was because I was able to leverage those funds through programs like this and grants. Um, you're right, this, there's a reason that, the, my point today was that housing is a new core service. And yes, it does, it does challenge other, other departments. I mean, it's, you don't have a affordable housing line item right now in the county budget. And so as you look at this, it really does come down to, and I think to the point of how do you, there's things you can do that don't cost money. Code changes, uh, that incentivize private developers to come in, working on infrastructure, do the things. I always tell, I, this is exactly what I told the sixteen communities out in the eastern plains. Do the things that you're good at, the government. You have a public works crew. You have, you have a water and sewer crew. You know your infrastructure. Work on the infrastructure, get the site ready so when the builder shows up, they're ready to go vertical. You know, it's, it's investments in your own community, infrastructure, the core services that you do and how you leverage them moving forward. That allow you, rentals are really hard to build and so you got to be creative. Uh, you got to make it incentive, you got to give density so that the performers work out. It's, it's really taking a hard look, you know, and I think, and like I said, do the work of the housing coalition. The advocacy, been there, it's not, you know, this discussion probably four years ago, when you talk about density bonuses and et cetera. Those are probably a little bit harder conversations to have in people. So yes, you're right, does it, does it, does it stress the budget? It will, but the most important thing Jeff is really looking for the opportunities to take a hundred thousand dollars and turn it into a night, like the Dole Grant.
Yeah, well, just to keep, I mean, I guess my question was, yeah, I was, I had in my head, I mean, yeah, like a hundred thousand dollars or like what kind of infrastructure costs, definitely things that are under our control, like zoning. But like things to me that stress the budget are like, you know, multi-ten million dollar buildings. So, you know, and we're not talking, or at least, you know, I, I don't think we're talking about, as you said, like, government is noise the best, but like being builders.
Yep.
Saying we're not, or, you know, I guess our question is, you know, when you say stress the budget, are we looking at developing like a hundred thousand dollars, you know, thousands of dollars line items to be able to, you know, provide matching funds. Some of the things you listed for millions and tens of millions of dollars to actually be developers.
So flip to your map real quick Jeff and everyone, but if you look at the infill sites, that's the perfect example of how you leverage to get housing with, with limited funds. Those for the, that first site that I described, that was the sites the school district owned on the ball fields. Then the two on Fourth and Eighth Street. When you go out to those sites, we actually drove out through again today, it's not sure I wasn't crazy. Those sites have utilities and existing infrastructure to the site. One site like the Fourth Street site, I know needs a sewer extension, but that sewer extension is three hundred feet versus three thousand feet, like the climate parcel. So it's really, it's really building, building off small successes. And then the other thing is, as, as you develop a housing program, there's other ways to, a regional housing authority, there's other ways to bring money into the war chest that aren't even taxes, like development fees that are paid on the backend of a sale. Um, that's, you know, we had a three percent fee that we charged on a, on a for sale property that went back into, into it. It's not a whole lot of money, it's like eight, ten thousand bucks, but it continues to add money into that, into that copper. Um, trying to think of something, trying to think of things that are not taxes, um, as, as a.
So for, for instance, on the, the number two, the cosmic properties. You know, with a five acre site on something like that, to knock that down, you're likely going to have to issue some sort of a bond. So the city, so we've got a, we've got a two acre site that is doing about fifty years on. And we're partnering with the town and the county, the city, the, the town of Red River is going to issue certificates for participation bonds to do, uh, debt funding. We're going to Dola to get some of the infrastructure costs. Um, and then we just have, you know, each municipality will each kind of bring about five hundred thousand dollars for the project. And then we're going to finance it. And then we're going to set up the AMI score, we're capturing, you know, a group of people that we need to help, you know, to be able to provide for the community. Hopefully those AMIs will get down to maybe as low as thirty. I'm guessing that when we're all done, uh, we'll have about fifty percent of the units that may be at eighty percent or less. And then to offset the cost, and those other ones have to be above that, right? They've got to be market rate, it's got to be capable of people who are paying no rents, who can afford to pay no rents, those kinds of things. And then we just, you ram off through to us and then those bonds are just paid off over, um, you know, some period of time. But money is, you know, hopefully continues to be fairly cheap. It's cheaper for municipalities to be able to get that money, but you've got to have those partnerships in place to get access to it. Uh, you know, so we have, we have a finance, we have a finance department, we have an attorney working on it. The actual issuance of the COP bonds, it's not that big of a deal. You know, the town said, yeah, we're going to do, we're going to, this project, we're going to spend about seventeen million dollars. You ended up knocking down that whole parcel, five acres, you're probably near the twenty-five million dollar property. Your twenty-five million dollar project, you get about eighty or maybe a hundred units on it. If there was the wherewithal to go that much density, so that would look like the standard parking complex between two and three. Uh, stories with, um, you know, I would think that you'd even be able to park that at a pretty standard parking rate, you know, you might. But that would be one of your incentives. You want to bring that down, you want to provide transportation, you want to extend the bus route down to that parcel. And then take it in, those are all things that they can look at, that will. And then take it in, those are all things that they can look at, that will finance those projects. As you have those pieces in place, those incentives in place, you could go for those dollars. It's very complicated, the financing is the hardest part of doing these kinds of deals.
And the the jump on capital stacking.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they call it a capital stack, they're trying to all move those pieces before you.
But I will tell you, and then you can testify to this, Jeff, believe it or not, a hundred thousand dollars in a capital stack coming from the local government. Is normally the big piece of grease that it takes to get to get the thing going. There's actually uh special limited partnerships where you could, where you can partner with a developer. And and uh and for instance, if the regional housing authority had the ability to grant tax exempt status, they could not, that developer wouldn't be subject to property. And as a pro forma on a rental project, it's huge. But there's lots of, lots of ways, Jeff, to take that, that small amount and really leverage it. And the other one big lesson I will talk about about money and and I I have a really big believer in this is. That if the leadership in this room leave with putting up, it might not be a million bucks, but a hundred thousand bucks.
It's amazing how much the money will.
The fall. It it's really, because you're sending out, and also, and actually, to this home point. The codes also send a, send a message to the development community, like you guys are willing to be participants. Time is money in construction, and so if you get caught up in a year and a half in peddleman battle over a property. That is killing you because you're paying interest in everything.
And once you're labeled as that community, they're not coming back until you've proven that you're no longer that community, and that will take a decade.
You said, oh, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. How do we ensure, I mean, is there something with these properties, with people buy them, that we ensure they will help? Our school district, like their employees from the district or the county, and not just a bunch of people from bail coming in and going, oh, this is cheap. I can go to bail, drive over there, work.
That is a great question, that is the community, so that's into that process, that's the community guidelines, and Christie, actually, you can go back to that slide. No problem. Um, but, and that and that's really critical, and then, and so, as a school board. Again, building housing is not in your mission statement, right?
No.
But you have, but you are sitting around two entities that have decided to make it for service. And so the question becomes, if you're a partner at the table, and we start talking about good, the community guidelines slide, sorry. I go forward to and then up there to. Well, this is the guiding document of people all rise of the responsibility, and what, what you, a- again, is. You you guys have property, right, and that is a huge asset to build and power it. And again, the properties we identify, if they come up that you need facilities on those, easy to back up. But we've done the planning and understand the horizontal and infrastructure costs, so, but when we start to talk about tiers and we go through this process. You know, essential employee that works in my county, it's the county employees, the city employees, it's not a school district employee because. You guys contribute land to the, to the process. This is where you say. Thank you, city government, thank you, county government, for taking the role of scheme facilitator, and we have been part of the process to solve that. And we know that because we adopted these as a community, it was an inclusive process as we go through it. That your your priorities, your employees are prioritized. That's a great.
Yeah, and then just to add on that, you know, from the equity lens, I want you guys to be thinking about your school bus drivers. Your supportive services, this is not just about your teachers, it takes more than just your teachers to run your school. Uh, and those people are typically on the lower end of the economic scale. So make sure you're advocating for all of your employees.
I was gonna ask, so the participation of various uh contributing partners in this. Uh, within the the qualifications or maybe um the the the. The shares, various shares between them, or does it spell out in an IGA?
You could do it that way, what I will tell you is. So I, I impressed with you, I had nine different deed restrictions that they had showed up. I would discourage social engineering per project and really look at. Creating guidelines that set your policy and priorities. If the school district comes on board and is part of that, part of the solution. They're in the tier one, and again, I hate to say it because it's it's a horrible thing, but it's the reality is. You guys got it, again, the whole reason I started with this core service stuff at the beginning of this meeting is, you have to take care of yourselves first because. Without taking care of your community and the services you provide, this isn't a place where people want to live. And so that what makes those services big, and you know this, are the employees that work in here day and day out. So, yeah, it is really important that, as it's the school district, as you participate, you know, that we we look to ensuring that your employees are part of. Who qualifies.
But are you saying that we shouldn't parse those out by percentages, that it should be more holistic in the approach?
I, by percentages being the AMIs.
Oh, well, no, the percentage is being, uh, you have a project, and it's a hundred houses, and the school district has donated land. They say, well, we we would like to have thirty of those deed restricted for school district employees.
So there's a policy and there's a reality. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come out of the reality. You don't build spec houses, or bad houses, you never do, and actually, we live in the southeastern plains, we are only building those hundred twenty-seven houses, houses that are under contract. The most important thing Jackie is doing, doing, and her first six months of as new housing director. Is having a master list of those that are how in a mini housing. And really, that is what's critical when you go, especially on a for sale project, is that a bank doesn't want us, you can say, we have a huge housing problem. We're building eight houses at three hundred fifty thousand, they're gonna say, well, that's great, create another contact. And that's what's critical is that that lottery process and by 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 having that list, like, tell you firsthand, because I have that list in my control, Chris and you. You start to structure your projects around that list and where the needs are. So there's, that's the reality, the policies, right? This document, this, this document needs to have some flexibility, right? You don't want to get it to the point where only, a bank doesn't want, the bank, the construction lender, doesn't want to know that there's only ten percent of one bill. Citizen might qualify for this project. So that's why you can tier the system, or if there's, we go to tier one. So say, let's just from navigation, say tier one is city, county, and school employees, just for, not just saying that's what it should be though. And say, you have ten units, seven units, there's some applicants that are tier one, and now there's three units for tier two. And then there's, if there's no one speaks up for tier two, then no unit's gonna be tier three.
And some of it is also gonna depend on if it's a for sale or a rental, or, you know, project. Summit County and the town of Redon Ridge were absolutely moving back units into the projects that we come with, you know, that we're, we're developing. But the piece of that is, you also have to pay for those things, you know, they they, you don't get to just build it and be like, oh, we get three of them, it's free. You you actually have to, you know, you are subsidizing that unit for full in perpetuity for a person to live there, subsidizing now. Pay for it.
So they're.
Like a master lease.
You know, like a master lease, because you've gotta pay back, whatever the mechanism is that is financed that project. So you've gotta be paying back some ways, we typically are master leasing that and then pay here, you're gonna want to pay it back in, pay off the bonds, or hold back units. You know, there's some differences in some of the light tech projects, those are a little bit different, you can't have holdbacks on those, but, you know, so there are, there's lots of little pieces depending. But if, you know, if the the city and the county and the school district have a apartment, you may want to build something, you may want to hold back ten units. I think you can do that, you just need to have very clearly, you know, how is that gonna be funded, how is that gonna be financed, where is the, you know, where. You're going to pay through those, you know, maybe everybody puts a third, a third, and it's, you know, access to six or nine units, whatever that is.
And Greg, what's really important about this document is it's transparent and clear, so when Jackie has somebody come to my, goes in her office and says, why don't I qualify? It's that, it's not something that she arbitrarily made, not a true decision, you know, by the way, if they feel like they should.
Wow, that's a wide board.
Oh, did I touch it? Whoops, sorry, Zoom. Don't touch. Alright.
So when you said you don't recommend social engineering every project, you mean, don't change this for every project? You mean by create a community guidelines and then apply it?
Yes.
Is that what you meant by that? Okay.
Yeah.
Is that what you were asking about?
Not, not really, I was asking about the the division of of deed restrictions. You know, it's negotiated between the parties, that's what I was thinking.
And you'll get that a lot more when you have a public private partnership, when you're, like, for instance, if we go. If you look at the Fourth Street, the ancient parcels, and you're gonna do twenty minutes on this, you're gonna have a price point, if you only pass on vertical construction point. Cost, and your price point is gonna be, let's call it three hundred thousand, you gotta just make sure your AMIs. Allow for people that can qualify for ones for that amount. And again, it's, there, the, you know, is my other big lesson, I'll tell this pretty right now, no one project is going to solve every housing need. And you have to remember that every time you go, because if you try to do that, your project is really hard to finance, so, yeah, sorry.
So I think, and maybe from, kind of circling around both, what Dan was saying, and this is what I'm there, we're asking is. In terms of our guidelines, if people qualifies, and we have these three main parcels that. Whose land is owned by three different entities, the school, climax, and credits. And each one of those entities is willing to work towards building affordable housing on there, but they have their own set of interests too. Wanting a certain uh portion or a certain availability to the people that they wanna serve within their room. Does the, who qualifies when you're talking tier ones, tier two, two, three, are you suggesting that? That in a generic across the board is divided down by AMI or percentages of AMI? And or by how many are dedicated to like school district needs? City and county needs, and then everybody left out.
Again, you're, that's a loaded question, because there's a lot of different ways a project can be developed, the capital stacking that goes into the project. When you have, when you bring in private investments, there's, they're gonna have an expectation that I put in twenty-five percent. Of capital into the construction of this project, and was my, was my, and it's it's fine, especially when you talk about business, it's fine for them to say. I gotta take care of me, this is my asset, we take care of my business. For instance, like the first parcel was a great example. Yes, was there an expectation probably from him that he is going to have units for his employees come out of that? And that, the important thing about that is, when you start that project, that is known right up front. Everyone knows that he dedicated two and a half acres, we're trying to do a forty-eight, four unit, forty unit project, again, starting at numbers. Next number of units are going to stay with Melon Zona, because not only is he putting up land, he's probably also putting money for vertical construction costs. Again, for sale product, in my experience, is a lot easier because you're made full on the backend, right? I sell, I build a three hundred thousand dollar house, I sell to somebody a rare check for three hundred thousand dollars, I pay off the debt service. Rentals are where it gets really complex, right, because you have standing debt service that you have to continue to pay. And you're only getting a small amount back every month from former tenants. So they're just, to your question, it really depends on your development strategy. And so what's key, what's critical about these is that these set basically a very clear who qualifies and who doesn't. What this, what these guidelines will say is, there are folks who will not qualify. If you are a second homeowner, you cannot buy a house that is dealership, right? Those are the kinds of things that need to be crystal clear, that certain projects would disqualify.
So our discussions with the school district, the clinics and credits would fall out of. How many units they can anticipate would fall outside of our community guidelines?
If, if that is what is negotiated at the top, again, when you go into a development discussion like that, you wanna have that conversation with. But yes, the answer to that question.
Or it could be both, like, they could have to qualify and be employed.
And then the other thing I will say is that you will get trumped on certain projects if you touch certain funds, like light tech. They have their own deed restrictions, they have their own requirements, and they are bound by federal laws, and they'll say, awesome, you have guidelines, here's ours. You want our money?
But the uh absolutely true, they can also be layered together. Uh, the Wintergreen project in Summit County has forty units of light tech, a hundred twenty units, um, that are sort of market rate. They do have an ultimate upper cap, and then they've got thirty-six units, two buildings that are just for veil employees, uh, who live. There's kind of a hierarchy, first they have to live in the Keystone area, then if they can't get enough people who qualify to the Keystone area, then they can move out. Uh, to the Redon Ridge area, to the other areas, and ultimately, you know, it's just like, you just want to put somebody in a house. Uh, so far, we've never had a problem filling them, so you can layer them as well. So you can layer these different programs into one development, but one developer will take that. And you provide each of those housing options, this is again, is a rental property, it's a little bit different. Uh, construction, you know, some of these smaller ones are just, just begging for homeownership projects, it's gonna be smaller sites, eight site, fourth site. Maybe even a long one, say, uh, it's, it's, uh, complexity a lot more.
Hey, and talking about that too, the homeownership, which is the right name, something that you had said to me, and I, I'm sure you can create it better for the context of this conversation is. Just because, like, the homes could be purchased by entity and then rented long term.
Yeah.
So it's not that they couldn't be rental, they couldn't be households or units that couldn't be rented. But they would have, they would be sold, like, say the council wanted to purchase a unit or two, that's. I, it was helpful for me to, and I like, if you're talking about selling and homeownership, there's still that possibility through organizations that can.
That's a great example, so when you talk about, again, when you build something, there's a debt service up to that, at the backend, so you have a bank that that runs on a loan. We had to get really creative and impressive you, because building one or two rental units was next, is next impossible, because you can't finance a three hundred fifty thousand dollar rental unit. And then make your money back over, you know, a couple years. But what we did was, we actually operated businesses. Now, long as the business put an employee that was a employee of Gunnison County into that, back into that unit, we allowed them to buy it. And they, they paid, they made me whole as a developer on the backend, so they paid me the three hundred thousand, so I paid off my note. And then I got a rental unit on the backend, and actually, school district purchased two units from us. Um, and one project, the fire district actually purchased like six. Um, so, you know, your U S entities can purchase them, and again, you're able to make back money on the return. And more importantly, you're able to secure really essential employees in that, so there's lots of ways to structure that. Yep.
If something is deeded for sale, and I think that resale one speaks to it. Can there be, do those deed restrictions remain in place?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if something's deeded to the community, it's purchased by a school district employee, get round one, they can't then turn around and sell it at the second hole. It has to stay community housing.
Yep, the only, there's, and I don't wanna scare everybody, but the big asterisk on that is foreclosure. And that is where you as a community, working together as collaboration, you actually, and we did this in, in the Gunnison Valley. We allow the ci, the town, the city of Gunnison, the county, the housing authority to resolve foreclosure. So whoever could step in to save that deed restriction in the first sixty days, to save the unit. And that is, uh, in last recession, that became actually a pretty big issue for certain, for certain, like a couple, couple projects that. That happened and the deed restrictions were lost, but that is a, that is kind of a mortgage lending thing that came out of the last recession. That's really the only risk of a deed restriction.
And I'll just say, the coalition's gonna be giving you guys a little break on advocacy for a while, because you have a lot on your plate. But once we get through this again, we're gonna come to you again about um funding mechanism, and we're gonna talk about how you guys. Set up funds for rainy days to be in a position to act quickly on things like this, so we don't lose. Opportunities that we have invested in. You gotta be able to really, I mean, you'll get the money back, right, because you're gonna sell it. And you'll get that money back from the lender, but you have to have the cash on hand or a line of credit to be able to move quickly. On that transaction.
I'm actually at cashier checks on the pockets three times. I do, it's kind of a really weird process.
So the, would, would every single property that is done with this be deeded forever aside from. Aside from a foreclosure and having to do that, or aside from. Or aside from one of the entities purchases that maintains as a rental, would every single one of these properties be deeded restricted? In the way that it's decided where it has to be a Lake County, not, not Lake County government employee, but a, an employee somewhere working in Bloodville. Has to be a first home, it has to be, is all, are all, every single one of them restricted like that?
So I'm going to answer that question, it's a, it's a, that's a policy discussion, because as Dan thought, there is a way to kind of build your worth just by having some free market. I I have been spanked so many times by city councils of even suggesting that, especially when you talk about using public assets. Um it is a, it's a, it's a, it's a slippery slope that you get yourselves into. However, it is, I mean, when you start talking about larger projects, there's going to imply, there, there will inevitably be non-deed restriction. And actually, you can actually structure a deed restriction, so I had deed restriction heavy, and I had deed restriction light, impressive you. Deed restriction heavy was cap appreciation, income qualified, um had to work in the county so many numbers of years, and then income or deed restriction light was that it was occupied as a permanent residence. But no cap appreciation, right? And so there's different ways to build in, like ways to get money back without sacrificing the deed restriction not being.
And additionally, do you guys remember that development strategy slide that he talked about? Um so, you know, you guys could decide to go with a land trust model, uh which uses land leases rather than deed restrictions, so. Yes, deed restriction is a tool, and there are other options.
I'm happy to keep the meeting going, but we are twelve minutes over. Um if the, I mean, this is such an important discussion, that I just want to make sure we're respectful, but if we have to get home.
What am I doing, another question I'd like to ask?
Uh sure.
Uh I've been working under the 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 assumption, and we'll take it as as a clear example. Climax uh deeps, this, they're nine acres to the city of Bloodville. The city of Bloodville wants to send out an RFQ or an RFP for a developer. And one of the things that we have uh to to work with is the land. Um is it safe to assume in all these cases that a long-term land lease would be a a proper way forward?
I would tell you, so for, I, that's, that's, actually, this is one law. Uh because I am building, again, a hundred twenty-seven houses we're building in Southeast. We are actually, as an incentive to the developer, we are allowing them to use the lots as collateral on their construction. And so we are actually needing to develop the lots on the land, make sure you know this, right? I'm not just kidding with them, but we put up a lot of credits, likely the lots are like three thousand dollars and something before, not a huge lot of credit, but I have enough to buy back that land. And so you can do, there's different models like that, Ray. Um you can, you can, you as, if entities can serve as a construction financier, and you can put up six lots. And you could allow them to come in, and you could do the construction draws as they perform, right? And they can won on that, and then that's protected on that as far as the surety. Normally, uh for sale product, you want the asset, which is the land, you go with the property again, because then the people don't actually enjoy that. On a rental product process, and then again, land trust model is actually, does do that, and that's a great model. So there is, there's, there's different ways to follow it.
The rea, the reason I ask is, I can't, I fully speak for the city, divest, divesting ourselves a layer is a real problem for us. Uh it's a, it's a complicated process, and I, and if I'm not mistaken, maybe we have to go with both. People, so.
Well, and this is, that's what the fifteen thousand dollars in the strength for, it's to take a hard look at how to be able to do that.
There, there are some ways around that with the land lease too, Greg, um and you can do it, in Los Alamos, when I was fourteen in New Mexico. Uh school district that, there was no grocery store in Los Alamos, we had to go down. We actually did a ninety-nine year lease with Proger, and they built a beautiful new grocery store, ninety-nine year lease, and then they gave rents back to the school district for ninety-nine years. Um and then there's some automatic rules and things, so there's lots of different ways to structure that, you know, that it is a real estate transaction. But you don't actually, the original institution doesn't actually like lose the land. Uh so I think it just depends on, you know, it it depends on who your partner is, it depends on what the goal, the, you know, the jurisdiction is. Um and certainly for sale, depending on the model, if, you know, some people may or may not want to do that, with the land trust model, and also get equity as you go through that. Um even without the land, so it's, it just sort of depends on what the model is. I wouldn't write it off to say you only have to sell.
Yeah, I, I, it's similar to housing, but um the Ford and I are realizing that their passports have given a long-term leases of county land. Uh to certainly win the community uh for very cheap rates. So just a, I, it's just one thing to think about, of like, what would actually be the future use of that? Maybe in fifty years, you know, housing is an issue, or like, we need to do something else with the land, so just. There's like a longer term thing to think about, where, you know, if you get a new county manager who really wants that land personally, but there's a. Deal, a deal agreed on a couple decades ago that still is ongoing, so thank you.
Michael, quick question, at one point you said, the land around the ball field, but it's not highlighted.
No, it's not, because it, that is actually, before we ever talk about that, that's a great parcel. If there's a reason that's not on here, is because you, the three entities need to talk about facilities first. And what kind of facilities, and then whatever potentially might be left over, then then we can plan around housing. But you're not going to create another parcel like there is at Ballfield again, or for your facilities, and with the list that you have. We need to make sure we, we've set aside that space and the time to have those conversations around what maybe the school needs, what maybe the county needs, is all the recreation. Put you guys in the same room, um and hash out, hash that out. Housing, if you get your act together on what you need to facilities, there's going to be a good outcome for housing, because there's going to be a lot of good parcels. Thank you, I'm sorry that we went over, I try to always be prudent, but thanks for. We have to come drive with car.